Here we are at City Council Chambers at 111 East Maple. Mr. City Manager, I will turn it over to you if that would be appropriate and have you start out.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The first item we have to present for you tonight is an update on our unlicensed landlord enforcement program. In the budget that the council adopted this past June was included $25,000 to bring on supplemental staff to help us better regulate and enforce our landlord licensing program here in the city. So we want to give you an update on this as this was a new program included in your budget. And tonight, we're excited to have Becky Haake, who is managing this program on behalf of the city, share an update with you on the first few months of this project. So I'll ask Becky to come forward and share her update.
Welcome, Becky. Thank you. And if you could, please just make sure the microphone's closed so people online can hear you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Becky Haake, and I am doing the research for the rental-ready program. And I want to thank you for asking here tonight to give updates on my findings. Now if I can get this work. Rental-ready background: Rental-ready program established June 1, 2017. It requires units to be inspected and pass basic health inspections every two years. This program was started to make sure that renters had a safe place to live, also to give the potential renters a way to see if the landlords were licensed before they moved in, and if need be, file a complaint on safety issues with the city. And this could all be done through the city website. The inspections are basically looking for safety issues. Is the electrical safe? Does it have GFI where it needs to be? Does the plumbing work? Are the windows not broken? Are there smoke detectors? No visible mold? Those are the items they're looking for. Landlords are required to have valid business license and list all units on the license. Landlord licenses. Over 1,400 active landlord licensed. That represents approximately 11,300 units licensed. According to the census... Oops, my paper hit it. I'm sorry. According to the census, approximately 20,000 rental units are out there. Approximately 1,100 landlord licenses are delinquent status, which represents about 5,000 rental units. Let me give you an example of this. What a neighborhood looks like with rental units. I will not be calling out any landlords or any companies by name tonight, but I mapped out a neighborhood which I consider to be a fairly large subdivision. It has 362 homes in it. Price ranges from about $140,000 to $200,000. Out of that, 362, 127 of them are rentals. Out of the 127, 16 of them are current on the rental-ready program. 17 are delinquent, and three are in review state. That leaves 90 of them noncompliant, nonlicensed rental units. They have not been inspected. They have no business license. There's a lot of difficulty in tracking these programs. Rental homes are bought and sold. In some cases, that property is sold again in less than 30 days. Some of the large companies oversee numerous LLCs, and they move these houses from one to another, sometimes every one to two years. Some will move the same house between two and three LLCs within a month before they keep it in one for any length of time. I can't figure out why they do this, but there must be an advantage because it's done quite often. Let me give you an example of what I found. The city has not seen these numbers, as it's my current report I'm working on. There is a parent company, and under that parent company, there's 13 LLCs. They are using three different mailing addresses, two states, and two different states. So far, I am at 160-plus houses owned by these LLCs in Independence. Many of them have done exactly what we were talking about. They've switched them around. They're hard to track. Some of them are licensed, some of them aren't. Some of the LLCs are licensed, some of them aren't. I can tell you the parent company is not licensed in the city of Independence. So, you know, you can kind of see the difficulty because you're having to look at back sales, too. Not just who currently owns it, but who they... Because if you see they sold it or bought it from another LLC, is this LLC connected to the last LLC, and they're just transferring them? Homeowners sell properties to investors. We all know that. And licensed landlords acquire additional properties and then always add these properties to their license. In one of my earlier reports, we have a company, LLC. It's licensed. It's current on all five properties. The problem is they owned 39 more that they didn't list on their license. So it's just difficult. Things like that makes it very hard to track some of these rental properties down. Through September, and I didn't start till close to the end of August, so we found 63 unlicensed landlords. That represents 340 units with a potential of 6,300-plus in revenue. I'm not in charge of, you know, setting the revenues. I know there are license fees. I believe there's late fees. There's potential for fines if it goes through court. What the city has told me that potentially, they see it as about $100 per landlord is the fee. And I know that business licenses are due every year. So, I mean, this would be an incurable fee. And then that. You have any questions?
Anyone? Any questions? Please proceed.
First, I want to say thank you for this work. It is really important for us to be able to be sure that when people move into our city, they're moving to a home that is safe, and it's an opportunity for the city to be in partnership with landlords. I would imagine that your reports then generate letters that go to those LLCs? Or what is kind of the step that follows that?
Yes, that's what it does. I send it to the city's department, and that is their job is to go and further fish this forward.
Okay. And how many folks do we have who are doing inspections? Are those people contracted?
That would be... Mr. Scannell. That's out of my control there.
Good evening. So we have, within the rental-ready program, there are five company... Those inspections. And so it's the landlord's responsibility to contact one of those five pre-qualified inspection companies to schedule those inspections. And all of them are great companies. They all work with the landlords in, you know, the timing of those inspections and really anything to try to make it as easy as possible on the landlord to get those units inspected.
And so when there are concerns or complaints, do those have to be generated by the person renting? Or can the neighborhood at least send those concerns into the city as well?
So we can get them one of many different ways. It can be a tenant that's complaining about, hey, I don't think my landlord's licensed. Or another method that we get the complaints is from the neighborhood citizens who live on the streets or on that street where that unit is registered or located. And they'll say, I don't think that property is registered. And so staff can then look at that.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Holberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Haake, you know, Mr. Walker and I, this is part of our ongoing mini-mission to crack down on rentals, unlicensed landlords and rentals, and to make sure people are, like Councilmember McCandless mentioned, have safe, affordable places to live in Independence. Have you made yourself... I just want to make sure that you've made yourself available to all the council members, and you're looking not just in the 4th District, although I'd certainly enjoy that.
I have sent out an email to everyone when I started that had my phone number on it in my email. I've spoke to most of the council that if anybody has any problems in their district specifically... Because otherwise, I'm either following a lead or I'm just throwing a dart at a dartboard, looking for places. That you can contact me and say, hey, I'm having a problem with this area, or this subdivision, or this house, and I can further do that. Because what I didn't say is, and there is also, these aren't the houses you think they are all the time.
Yeah.
I got a phone call one day from somebody that was complaining that they had several... I'd known this person for years, but they'd had several properties on their street go into rental. This is a new subdivision in Eastern Independence. Still, last summer, they were still doing construction. Houses are $300,000 to $475,000 probably. Seven of them in one street in three months went to rental. All seven of them, different landlords, all of them out of state. Everyone just bought one house. And then you had two of them in there that were short-term rental that I've understood has turned to long-term rental. So it's not just the neighborhood you think. I mean, this is like everywhere.
Yeah. Yeah. So you've looked in... So out of these, they're in all the different... All over town?
Oh, yes. Because like the one we were talking about, the 13 LLCs, it started with one house in the 4th District. I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
But it was owned by an LLC, which then I looked up at LLC and found out it owned a whole lot of more properties in Independence, and then had been bought from another LLC that had the same address, which is kind of a clue. And that one had been sold. And so those 160 spawned off of one house, but they're everywhere. I mean, they're every district.
Yeah. And I... Could you give just a tiny bit of your professional background for those of us that might not know? Because I don't know if everybody knows what you have done or...
Oh. Done a lot of different things. Been in finances...
Well, sure.
You know, business finance and all that for a while. But for the last 22 years, I've been a real estate agent, have my broker's license, and pretty much concentrated in Independence.
Yeah. And lived in Independence all your life, so you know the...
Oh, yeah.
Neighborhoods.
Lifelong Independence person.
And lived in Rockwood, so...
Yeah, you're up. You're up. Graduated from Van Horn.
Yep.
You know? So it's kind of hard watching it, you know, some of this go on. And it's kind of something that... I thought this program was a great program when it started in 2017. I thought it was created out of a need. And I think it's one that needs to continue. But a lot of these houses seem to be dated and purchased in 16, 17, and 18. Then there was a gap. And then we get the low interest rates of 21, 22, and even the start of 23. And so there's a lot of purchases being done during that timeframe.
I thought one other interesting thing that we've talked about before... One thing that you came across that was really interesting, that just is an odd thing, was you came across one of these big companies that had a whole bunch of houses inside of one giant mortgage or one giant loan.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe you could tell them about, that's also another interesting vehicle that you've seen.
Yeah, it's kind of scary. Because you'll see some of these with the LLC names on them, and sometimes I can pull up their mortgage information. And there's several of them out there. And they're under a $70 million mortgage on a $175,000 house. But they've attached that mortgage to that one house. But they've bought, you know, $170 million worth of houses, but they've been loaned to buy. And that buys a lot of houses.
Yeah.
Now, whether they're all in this area, you don't know.
But they just have a giant loan, and they're from out of state, and they can just... That's how they can buy so many houses so quickly, is they just have this...
They have the blanket loan. And some of them have multi-blanket loans.
Yeah.
And I think sometimes, I think that's why they sell between LLCs every so many years, is I'm guessing this blanket loan is a short-term loan. It's good for three, four, or five years. Then you're going to sell it, but you're going to sell it to another LLC for another big blanket loan.
Yeah.
That's my guess.
Well, I appreciate it. Mr. Walker handed out or provided us with a report, and it said that... And this one's on a business license. I don't know if you've even seen it, but in September, 2022, there were 51 renewals. In September 2023, there are 144. So maybe this is a better question for Mr. Walker. Is that, you think, a result of this program as well?
Yes, specifically, those are landlord licenses. So council receives from community development a report each month on business license, new applications and renewals, and those include landlord license, both new applications and renewals. And yes, I believe as a result of our aggressive approach in making sure we've got an equitable playing field with everybody being licensed properly, you're seeing that in the data.
I mean, I'm incredibly encouraged and think this is very successful, so I appreciate the update. Thank you, Ms. Haake, and thank you, Mr. Walker.
Councilmember.
Yes, Ms. Haake, thank you for your work on this. Very much appreciate that. And I have a question just really, and probably not for you, probably for Mr. Scannell or Mr. Walker, relative to, can you just review for us, once Becky identifies someone that's not in compliance, what your process is? You know, how many time, how much opportunity they have to bring things ready? And before we start being cracking things down a little bit more and some things of that nature? Could you kind of go through that?
Absolutely. So we get the report from Ms. Haake. Staff will go through that report and verify. That's the first thing that they do, just to make sure that when Ms. Haake found those, that new applications have not come in. So we verify that. All of those that they find are not licensed. Staff sends a letter to the property owner, letting them know that they are required to have a business license. And there is some time that they give them somewhere in the neighborhood of about two weeks to submit your application and start going through that rental-ready inspection process. If they haven't done that, they will follow up with them with another letter. After that, if they still have not, staff will attempt to write tickets to go after those unlicensed landlords.
So in order to write a ticket, do they have to find the people? And I mean, or...
So ultimately, you know, when they write the ticket for municipal court, it's up to the judge to decide what that fine could be.
Okay, I see what you mean. All right. Okay, that's helpful. I just, you know, it seems to me like we have a lot of potential here. And maybe could you speak to the 1,100 delinquent landlords? That... Why we would be in that kind of a scenario?
Kind of goes back to what Ms. Haake was talking about with the low interest rate in environment. Those properties are sold sometimes multiple times within the same calendar year. And we notify the individual who holds that license. And then if they have sold that property and maybe sold it again, we don't have that information. And that's how that number of delinquent landlord builds up.
I can speak on that just a little bit. Is I can say the majority of them that I've... That come across that are delinquent, probably 50% or better of them have sold. So the landlord didn't, you know, renew the license because they sold the property.
Sure, sure.
But the new one didn't report it either.
Well, I'll look forward to hearing more about what kind of success we have as time goes along here on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Please proceed.
We had a little bit of fallout, please.
You're good.
Mr. Walker, you know, I don't know that the council needs to approve this or anything, but I... And of course, up to you and your department heads. But since we're now spending some time and money on enforcement, you know, if we're able to tack on some administrative fees or some collection fees or enforcement fees, if that's... If that's okay with... If that's okay with Councilmember Steinmeier's wife.
We're going to have to have you remove, lady.
I'm going to overrule the councilmember's request.
If we could tack some fees onto that, you know, maybe with increasing levels for noncompliance, you know, I would certainly be in support of that. So anyway, maybe something to think about as we go along.
Certainly.
Also, just one more thing. Thanks. Shout out to the 4th District folks that came tonight. Sure appreciate that. It's good to see my friends. That's right. That's right. I sure appreciate it. They show up every month and they work hard. There's a group that is well-organized. And they really care a lot about what goes on out there, and Becky's helping us out there, too. So we appreciate that. Thank you very much, Wes. Yeah?
Please proceed.
I mean, maybe this is... I'm not sure who answers this, but in a rising interest mate environment, it is likely that we will see some of these sort of speculative purchases get into trouble because they are overextended. That could be really disruptive to the housing market in our community. And so I don't... I don't even know what my question is, but it just makes me nervous. So I guess, Mr. Walker, is that something that we're concerned about? Do we have any opportunities in that space to protect neighborhoods? Because delinquent properties that are being invested in is a real drain on neighborhoods. And that's certainly what the South Independence Community Improvement Committee is trying to be sure that they maintain self and safe and healthy neighborhoods. This could be a problem.
Yeah, I think we have to be very cognizant of the economic environments that we find ourselves in and making sure we're sustaining quality neighborhoods, no matter what those economic forces look like. So being self-aware is very important from a city standpoint. Had a council person tell me today, we have an obligation, not just for placemaking, but place maintaining. So I think that fits perfectly with this.
My next question is, how often are the inspections done? What if you've had a stable tenant for five years? Do they have to continue to be inspected? Can you just kind of speak to the mechanics of it, both so people listening understand what they should expect from the city and from their landlords?
Sure. So the landlord license is an annual license that the landlord needs to renew. The rental-ready inspection, that is conducted every other year. And again, that is the inspection where the landlord hires the third-party contractor to do those. And it's not just any third-party contractor can do those. It's those that are already pre-qualified and on the city's website. Those are the ones that the landlords need to contact in order to do those every other year inspections.
So it's obvious that problem landlords, you want to stay on top of them. But we also have landlords who do wonderful jobs, take great care of their properties, are very good to their tenants. Do we have any way that we either waive an inspection? If you've had three in a row that are great, we give you a grace period for a period of time? How do we both keep the ones who are not behaving, but reward the ones and thank them for who are doing good business in our town?
And that was a topic that came up when rental-ready was initially passed by the city council back in 2017. And that's something that we would like to get to. It would take an ordinance change in order to do that, setting out those parameters, outlining who's a good landlord versus one who may be not so well. We'll have to see how some of these LLCs come out. They may, you know, maybe kind of not renew their license, but they may be excellent landlords that keep their properties up and things like that. So we would need to develop some criteria that's equal to all of the landlords.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Other questions, comments? Okay. Any other wrap-up comments, Mr. City Manager, with regards to that program from your perspective, before we go to the next agenda item?
Nothing on this comment, on this specific item, but I do need to yield to the city councillor for a moment.
Please.
Mayor, we did have a single citizen request that was signed up to speak on this item.
Okay.
So I'd like to go ahead and take that up now, if we could, before we move on to the next item.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that was Wes. Wes is waving it off, so thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Epperson, you won... Mr. Kovar has your back. So, Mr. Kovar, thank you, and Mr. Walker, thank you for doing that.
Yep, my pleasure.
So we want to be respectful to citizens who want to talk, so thank you very much. With that, I'm glad you mentioned that, Mr. Kovar. Mr. Walker, anything to lead into item number two, Tourism and Museum Master Plan?
Yeah. Again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the Tourism Museum and Master Plan is a project that was started back in December of 2022, so just shy of a year ago. The city engaged with the well-known firm in this area, PGAV Architects, who've been working with community stakeholders across the tourism and historic site industry in our community, really to get feedback about how to get maximum impact and leverage out of our historic and tourism assets. You all got a preview of this back in July at your July 10 study session. But the architect has now finished their report, and they're here tonight to make the final presentation on that and recommendations for next steps. So it's my pleasure to welcome Jennifer Goke with PGAV to share the final Tourism Master Plan with you.
And Mr. Walker, just for my sake, could you repeat Jennifer's last name again, please?
Goke.
Goke, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council for having us here tonight. Is that good sound? As Mr. Walker said, I'm Jennifer Goke, a practice leader here at PGAV Architects. And I have with me Andy Struckoff, president of our planning group, PGAV Planners. We'd really like the presentation to be controversial this evening, so please feel free to stop us at any time and ask questions or provide some comment. PGAV is a multidisciplinary firm that includes architects, planners, and a variety of specialists that focus on creating destinations. As Mr. Walker said, we were hired in December of 2022 to complete a Tourism Master Plan for the city of Independence and a Museum Master Plan for the National Frontier Trails Museum. The objective was to provide a vision for Independence to fulfill its potential as a tourist destination through a major new museum and strategic alignment of other new and existing assets. We believe the reinvented museum will act as a driver for economic development in Independence. We shared with you a status update in July. Some of the information may be repeated, but we wanted to give you a complete summary of the findings as it's all relevant. We completed several stakeholder engagement meetings at the beginning of our process, including members from all of these organizations. In addition, we had an open house this past July after we met with you, sharing an update and getting additional feedback with members from these same groups. Andy's going to share our marketing findings. Andy's gonna share our marketing findings.
Thank you, Jennifer. Did everyone hear me okay? Evening, everyone.
Perfect, thank you.
Perfect. So, as I said, my name's Andy Struckoff, president of PGAV Planners LLC. I'm gonna be the data guy this evening, talk about some market analysis and market potential. Also, just want to say, really commend you all for getting into the housing issue. I know that's not the topic of my conversation, but I love hearing that. It's super interesting. A lot of other communities are grappling with the same kind of questions, so awesome job. So, think about the tourism market. So what we did is we dove into cellphone tracking data, which sounds a little bit big brother, kind of is a little bit, but also super helpful information to help us really understand people that come to Independence, where they go within Independence, how long they stay, how destinations relate to one another, to help us kind of understand the dynamics of tourism and visitor, visitor traffic through and within Independence. So we looked at, in 2022, more than four million multi-day trips, over 24 hours, were made to Independence by residents of the KC metro area. So you guys have super deep penetration within the KC metro, which is super interesting and good to know. Okay. We looked at what happened during the-
Excuse me?
Sure.
Just to be, just to clarify, so 4.1 million multi-day trips
Yes.
For over 24 hours, that, from the Kansas City area, so I mean, you're saying they, they live in the Kansas City area, but they came here and stayed the night?
Correct.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, and I'll get, I'll get back into that.
I mean, I just kind of, that, I don't understand that, but that's fine.
But it is, it is a thing. It is a thing that's happening. And, you know, the KC metro area is pretty large, right? I mean, it's a pretty large area, so somebody might come from, you know, forty-five, fifty miles away, they might stay the night, that sort of thing. So we looked at what happens there in the Santa Calagon days. So this heat map shows where visitors came from. You know, and a little bit more than eighty-eight percent, or the great majority of visitors, came from more than thirty miles away. So everybody's driving a pretty good distance to come and spend the day at that festival, which does indication that people are willing to travel pretty far to come to an event that really appeals to them in Independence. Now that, you know, within a sixty-minute drive of Independence, there's 2.3 million people, right? And that's largely the KC metro area. So we're talking about that. We're talking people might drive from sixty for, an hour, from an hour away to come and spend a night in Independence and do some things. Looking at the length of trips, trip length, most trips are one or two days. Occasionally, you get people staying for longer, you know, nearly a third or three to seven day long trips. Nearly two-thirds of all trips happen during the weekdays, right? So really, a little bit more than a third of the trips are happening on the weekends. So you're getting most of your trip during the weekdays, which is interesting. And so, how do we kind of leverage this data, this information? Thinking about tourism infrastructure, you know, the sort of institutional backbone that supports ongoing marketing, sales, and servicing of the tourism industry and Independence needs, include group visitor meeting spaces, using your existing branding to create wayfinding to help people navigate from place to place within and around Independence, increasing social media and web presence, and parking appropriate for destinations, for each destination. We took a look at all the hotel rooms across Independence. It's 1,788 of them. Most of them are along I-70, and I think you all know that. But not many of those hotel stay, people that stay at those hotels are making their way up to the historic destinations, historic sites within Independence. So we need better marketing strategies to reach those hotel guests, to get them to come to downtown Independence and spend more time and money there. Okay. Now I'm gonna hand it back to Jennifer.
So part of our plan includes a branding strategy for Independence, which will give the visitor a new identity of what Independence has to offer. Step one, to create a strong sense of place so people know where they are in Independence, having a great experience. Establishing that look and feel for Independence that people, you know, take away and want to remember and communicate to others. Step two, communicate brand themes clearly and consistently. For example, this could be using various wayfinding strategies to identify your place in Independence. Step three, make a direct investment in a product that will show the transformation. This could include the museum, or again, the wayfinding. Step four, create a brand environment that encourages investment from others in the community. This could include locating the new museum where it benefits existing assets of the community, so downtown, the downtown loop, and where new investors see potential for other development. So, as one of our stakeholders stated in one of our meetings, make a place the locals love, and then it will be an attraction to tourists as well. And I think it's, it's very telling. So you saw this map before, but a first step would be to brand the entrances into Independence. We call these the gates. Make sure that as a visitor enters your city, they know it and they have a positive impression. As soon as you enter Independence, you feel like you're an inviting and, and community. Another step is to identify and brand the hubs. We've identified several hubs in Independence, as noted on this map. These are existing areas people gather for a specific purpose. But finding a way to give each of these hubs a sense of place and identity that a visitor remembers helps define that brand. Each hub needs to tie into the overall brand of Independence. And just to clarify, when we say brand, it's not the logo, it's the whole experience that you're trying to create and to have people take away. You have a number of existing nature assets. How do we leverage these to identify Independence as a place to go if you are seeking a nature activity? Downtown has a number of historic venues, setting it up to be a historic hub. Currently, our market analysis tells us visitors are not finding all that Independence has to offer. We need to find ways to educate the tourist on the variety of activities that extends their stay in Independence. Many come to Independence for the entertainment, retail, and hotel hub, and as Andy said, similar to the historic hub, visitors are focused on one activity that brought them to the area, but they're not expanding that visit to, to the other offerings. There are efforts ongoing to create better connections with hotel staff by the Tourism Commission, but hotel staff is also stretched thin and turnover rate is high, so making it difficult for tourism staff to build those relationships. Continued efforts to engage hotel staff are, are encouraged. Creating a sense of place at each of these hubs helps to build a positive experience for each visitor, one that they will then share with others. Again, we're trying to change or encourage recommendations from our own metropolitan area for visitors to our area. The market potential discussed earlier shows that visitors within our region will come if the experience appeals to them. Not only do we need to brand the identity for each hub, but we need to build connections between our assets and between hubs. This market diagram shows that visitors are not visiting multiple assets on a particular visit. We need to better educate the tourists to the multiple offerings, to plan an extended day visit, or ideally encourage overnight stays. The city's newly organized website can be a valuable tool for the tourists planning their visit, providing clear and concise information about the offerings. But there are other ways as well. Pedestrian, vehicular signage, bike lanes can also provide good, good connections between the venues. There are already connectors in progress. The ByState Green Corridor has great potential for connecting visitors between Kansas and all Missourians along the way to Independence. In addition, the Truman Connected Project is creating pedestrian and bicycle-friendly routes within and between key assets of Independence. But it's only a beginning. Additional routes are needed to create a full network of connectors to all tourism assets in between hubs. Extending these connectors beyond the downtown loop can increase awareness of other offerings and can again encourage extended stays. A family planning their holiday may plan a morning at a museum, but will want a more energetic activity in the afternoon. A businessman staying at Stony Creek or Hilton Garden Inn may want to experience a museum in the evening, followed by dinner near the square. In July, we shared with you the program outlined for the museum. Working with the city leadership and staff and listening to the stakeholders, we developed an outline that encompasses all of Independence' history, including parts that are currently under-told, including but not exclusive, exclusive to the Hiram Young story and the neck. We have identified other areas of focus to expand the target audience, including a children's museum for the younger ages, community theater for all ages, which is very active in your community, and interactive exhibits like the History Lab that will appeal to high school groups. That could also include exploration of career opportunities. As part of the museum planning, we analyzed four potential museum site locations in the vicinity of downtown Independence. For each option, we looked at land ownership, visibility from downtown, parking, availability, existing or potential for new, connectivity to Truman Connected and Independence Square Projects, site opportunities for an amphitheater, proximity to Hiram Young Park, which was an added benefit for several of the site options, and any phasing implications. So site one looked at a location on the corner of Walnut and Pleasant Streets. This site would need to be acquired by the city and has limited structures, but plenty of space potential for amphitheater and outdoor exhibits. It also has existing city-owned parking in close proximity. This site is more removed from the rest, remainder of the sites reviewed from the downtown loop, but is an area that could be revitalized, and there is already some investment occurring at the Model Train Museum and the Truman Depot, and this location could act as a bridge between the downtown loop and these newer venues that are underway. Site two is located on Lynn Street between Maple and Lexington. It is currently a city-owned parking lot, so there are no challenges waiting for other facilities to be relocated. Development sites at Truman and Nolan are left open for potential hotels on more heavily trafficked and visible routes. That, those are noticed, noted in green, number twelve. Site three is similar to site two, except the museum would be the termination of Maple Street, giving the visitor a direct view to the entrance of the museum from one of the city's primary east-west streets, Maple. Spanning the museum between Truman and Lexington creates an opportunity for a connection to Truman Visitor Center to the north and shared parking between the two entities. Similar to site two, development sites at Truman and Nolan are left open for potential hotels on more heavily trafficked and visible routes. Site four is located at the location of the current sermon center at Truman and Nolan. This site would require waiting for a new recreation center to be built, is less visible from the downtown loop, and is remote from the other historic sites within the downtown loop. Sites two, three, and four all offer opportunities for connections to existing Hiram Young Park, existing surface parking on Lynn Street, and opportunities with shared parking arrangements with Truman Visitor Center and other developments. We previously shared the draft program for the museum to be an approximate 115,000 square foot, gross square foot. That would include museum, community theater, and accessory spaces, leasable event space, and shared lobby and support spaces. This expanded program for the museum will bring a larger mass of people to downtown at various times of day and for a variety of purposes. New conference and event space not only serves the need for meeting space in Independence, but has the potential for encouraging economic investment by other businesses, including hotels to the downtown area. The museum is estimated at a total project cost of 127 to 157 million, including all exhibits and technology. And Andy's gonna share funding opportunities.
Thank you, Jennifer. So thinking about funding potential strategies around funding a project of this scope and size, your funding for a project like this may come from, you know, private contributions from individuals or foundations, charitable foundations, corporate giving and sponsorships, public sources, including federal grants, the state of Missouri, Jackson County, or the city. For operating funding, museum would earn revenue from ticket sales, rentals, memberships, and sponsorship programs. And we also would need revenue contributed from individuals and foundations, federal and state grants, or sale, and/or sales tax revenue. Back up for federal grants and state Missouri grants, the, the federal government often has grant programs through the EDA or other departments for projects such as this, and the state of Missouri may also, from time to time, have, have money they can, they can use for projects like this. So why are we talking about this now, or what's, you know, sort of timely about this concept right now? Thinking about Kansas City hosting the World Cup in 2026 and all the tourism that will come to the region as a result of that. The United States celebrating its 250th anniversary in 2026, also a big landmark occasion, which will drive a lot of interest in the stories that the city of Independence can tell. Also, the city of Independence will celebrate its bicentennial in 2027. And the new Green Corridor providing a strong link to the Kansas City metro kind of, kind of strengthens, strengthens these opportunities. Each of these represent economic development opportunities for the Independence community through tourism, and capitalizing on these opportunities requires some, some decisions and, and actions. So, in summary, focus on marketing efforts on the 2.4 million residents and 24 million annual visitors from Kansas City. Establish tourism hubs with branding, identity, streetscape, and wayfinding for each. Leveraging a lot of the tools you've already created, leveraging the stories that you can tell through your community. Establish branding at key roads as connectors within the city. Promote development of new lodging in downtown Independence. Establish a new facility around Little Blue Park to help create a nature hub. The addition of a new world-class museum with a fine and performing arts center, as Jennifer described. And recommendation of timely action on these items to drive the benefit of potential visitors for World Cup, America's 250th birthday, and the city's bicentennial. Next up, in November, we'll be submitting proposals for a wayfinding plan to implement some of these brand strategies and an interpretive plan to advance the development of the programmatic content of the museum and learning objectives in preparation for a new museum. Any questions?
Any questions for Andy? Councilmember, please proceed.
So you talked a lot about need for marketing efforts and, and, you know, find, helping people find the, the gems that we have in our, in our city. I'm interested to know, as you've, because you're the experts, you've done this in lots of communities, how do the most effective cities do that marketing? Through what kind of organization, or do they do it at the city level, or do they, is it done through, you know, some other organization? How, what's the best way, what do you see to be most effective to be able to drive that marketing and, you know, and, and get the, the results that we're looking for?
I'll start and Jennifer can jump in. But we see, it, it happened lots of different ways in different communities. It may include a tourism commission, may include, you know, professionally staffed, you know, tourism organization with people that are out in the community and sort of acting as boosters for tourism destinations, getting the word out that way, working with hotel concierges and hotel people to make sure that their guests know that these destinations are there and how to get there. Maybe packaging tours together amongst all the destinations to get people to make a loop and, you know, lengthen their stay, and working with other businesses and restaurant owners and things like that to incorporate those. There are ways that it can happen.
We went and visited, Councilmember McCandless, and some of us went and visited Manhattan. And they built their museum, and it took the, a commitment of a very passionate community. And it was the, the council, the museum, the, you know, people that wanted meeting space to really create a district.
people that wanted meeting space to really create a district that made it successful. So I think Andy's correct. I mean, it just takes a lot of different avenues, and every city is a little bit different. Manhattan's a lot smaller community. Maybe that makes it easier. You're a large community, and you're very spread out. So for your community, it might be, you know, look a little bit different than it does for any other one. But I know, I've been to the Tourism Commission, one of the meetings. You know, everyone is very passionate and wants it to improve. And they're struggling, like I mentioned, with, you know, turnover by the hotels. So as soon as you get one train, then you're dealing with another one. So, you know, your staff is doing a really good job. It's not that they're not, you know, they're just stretched thin. You've got so many amenities. The Vale Mansion, you know, so many things to take care of. It's like, okay, you know, maybe we need to focus and figure out how the city can best manage all of your assets and come up with a plan that just makes it more effective for your overall community. And I don't know the answer. That's maybe a, you know, business decision on the city's part. But, I mean, from our perspective, you guys are doing a great job. It's just how, we think there's a lot of opportunities for connectors and, you know, educating the tourists. How can we help you educate the tourists so they can find everything within your community? But there's probably more to that than just the wayfinding package. That's just one piece of it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember, please proceed.
I just want to touch back on our visit to Manhattan. While their Prairie Museum was an absolutely beautiful building, and like I could go there three times a week and still find something else to be interested in, they were really thoughtful about engaging young people. Their design was really fresh, so they did a very nice job of making people want to come back. You don't just go to the museum once. They sold packages, so people brought their kids to come and play regularly. But that was the anchor that led to domino development in that area. And so when they put that in, it was with the absolute understanding that it was part one of many. And it has been just a phenomenal economic driver for them. It rejuvenated a part of town that really had been neglected. It also kept their, like, retail centers alive because bringing people in, it was tied in, so it was completely walkable to the retail centers. They really just were very thoughtful. But one thing I will say is you could have cloned each person, and their messaging was so tight. So the chambers said the same thing that the council said, that the business people said, that the development people said. They really had a cohesive and thoughtful approach that allowed them to drive toward that economic investment. So this isn't something that you could take on casually. Either we're all in, or we shouldn't bother. It's a lot of money, but these things can be absolutely catalytic for rejuvenating parts of town. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hooper?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you back in Independence. Did you guys, have you been in the Truman Library yet, the new one, the refurbished?
I have not. I thought you were going to ask me if I came to Santa Collega days.
I'm not done yet.
I have not been to the Truman Library since it's been renovated.
Shame on you, because it really is actually pretty spectacular. And they did use a number of different funding sources to put that together, but it is very nice. And yet, another one of our assets, although we don't own it, but that we don't do a good job really of marketing. I liked what you talked about with connectors. You know, John Mayfield and I are on a bit of a mission to educate and recruit and also identify potential sources of funding with all the local politicians, the state level, the local level, the federal level even. And part of what we're trying to do is build out a network of related, you know, attractions. So St. Joe, for example, I don't know if you've ever been there, probably not.
I have.
Have you? They consider themselves the king city of the trails. We consider, therefore, the queen city of the trails. They have, the Pony Express started in St. Joe. And people, of course, did leave from St. Joe to go west. The trail started from a number of different places. They just, we had the larger percentage here. What do you think about that? Building out regional, more regional connections? You know, at least some of it has Cole Younger days, obviously with the Frank and Jesse James gang connection. Now, some of these aren't, you know, they're a little more colorful. But, you know, Frank James is buried down the street here. Over on the Kansas side, they have a popular Pioneer Trails-related attraction. We've had the idea, though, to build out sort of partnerships with them to sort of cross-promote.
I think anytime you can build partnerships, it's going to be to your benefit. Because if they're advertising, you know, marketing for that venue, then you're going to benefit from that. You know, it's always hard when you have to pick a, put a pin in it and say, okay, it's going to be in my city. You know, how much are they going to provide capital or investment? But I think partnerships are always going to be, you're going to be on the winning side of any partnership you can create. You know, whether it's the, you know, we reached out to the students at the community college. You know, that's why one of the lab, what was it? The History Lab. You know, finding engaging things. Not everybody wants to go to college, but there's a lot of careers out there. Maybe there's, you know, tools that can be part of the museum that helps, you know, find, that'll help them find careers that are different than, you know, one that would take them through a college career. So I think there's, you know, the Firehouse here. I mean, what a great history, you know, that is here in Independence. And yet, the community college has a great fire program.
Yep.
So, you know, there's partnerships like that, you know, that even within your own community that could...
Start growing those roots.
Right. Even the trains, the model trains, then you're already investing in the Truman train station. And you've got that, part of that project includes a trail extension to get you almost to the new train station.
Right.
But, you know, why not extend it all the way up and hook it around so that your Truman connected is a big loop? You know, so people can just, you know, either pedestrian or bike. We've got all these starting things, but we just have to kind of connect the dots, I think.
Yeah. The, I really liked that slide you had of all the connections. I, you know, it's sometimes hard, though, to piece that together because we have the Civil War era, we have the Pioneer era. I guess it's slightly before it, so it's sort of connected. We're surrounded by Civil War era. But then, of course, you go up to Sibley, you have the Forto Sage. You know, and then, of course, we have all the Truman era that's much more modern. It's hard, the Bingham and the Vale are somewhere in between and somewhat related to all of it, actually. It's hard to sort of put that together in one story.
Well, I think it's more than one story. And that's the interesting part.
Right.
I'm not going to steal the mayor's thunder. But, you know, I think it's, that's the unique thing about Independence is it's not one story. You've got so many stories to tell. And for any family, they don't just want to come for history. You know, they want to, that's why you've got some great nature assets. You've got great restaurants. You've, you know, you've got an athletic complex, but then you've got the Cable Dahmer that, you know, has great hockey. And so you got to put it all together so people do, you know, want the overnight stays in the hotel, you know, to increase that opportunity. But we just need to find the ways to make those connections.
What did you mean by wayfinding? What does that term mean?
Really, it's signage, but...
Physical signage?
Physical signage, but it can also be, you know, it can be lighting. It can, you know, I drove in on Truman Road, and you get to a certain point, and you've got the historic light poles. And all of a sudden, the landscaping gets a little bit nicer, and you just feel like you're in, not a small-town community, you know, that with a nice neighborhood. And so you just, it's a good feel. But you don't have that from all sides. So, you know, how can we maybe expand that so that from all sides, when you approach Independence, you know, you feel like you're in that great, you know, community? You know, Highway 70. There, on the exit, you can't really even tell that you're in Independence. It doesn't always have to be a sign. It could be landscaping, it could be lighting, it could be a sculpture.
We have six exits, and they're not, none of them feel the same. They don't look or feel the same.
And I know you can't put a sign on every one, but maybe there's something we could do to tie them all together that makes it feel like, okay, I'm in Independence. Oh, I get to one, and I must have passed out at Independence because it's no longer the same.
Right. Did you have something to add, Mr. City Manager?
Only to let the council know, you probably noticed the old wayfinding signage that had the walking Truman on those. Those had become dilapidated, frankly, over time, piling up snow that has the salt and sand in them. You know, just winters in the Midwest have been harsh on those. So those were starting to have both an aesthetic issue but also a safety issue as those poles became compromised. We've removed those now. But obviously, tourism being such a critical part of our economic engine here in the city, we are planning to work with the team here at PGA V on redesigning those as a component of the overall wayfinding signage and bringing those back to the historic district and the tourism area as part of the Square Streetscape project.
If it says "Great American Story" on it, I am not going to be happy. And I know, I know you exist just to make me happy. We're all well aware of that.
Yeah.
No, I'm hopeful that along with our bicentennial, we'll be able to sort of do some rebranding. I really am. I don't know that that really says much or represents. It's not that we aren't a great American story. We're certainly quite the American story. But I don't think that really has enough detail in it for who we are and where we've been as a city. Thank you. Always good to see you. Appreciate you coming back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did come to Santa Collega days.
What'd you think?
It was fun. I loved it. I went home with my root beer, and my kids said, where do I get more of that?
Oh, it was good, wasn't it?
Thank you all.
It was hot, too.
It was very hot.
Those are rough ones. I'm glad you came. Thank you, actually, for coming, so that's cool.
Councilmember Steinmeier?
Thank you.
Please.
Appreciate the information. A couple of questions for you. First, on the History Lab, we have a bigger story in this. I know Independence Forever has been this trail city. You know, this is the place that launched the West. But there's a bigger story from this community. Sure, we launched pioneers from here, but we also had pioneers who lived here. We have people that grew up here, people that lived here all their life. Everybody knows somebody that worked at Armco Steel that helped build America. They know somebody that worked at Ford and GM that helped move Americans. They know somebody that worked at Alice Chalmers, who helped feed America. Then we have all the labor unions that sit in our city. There is so much that needs to, I think, where we need to value and talk about the history of our city beyond the trails. And I think part of that History Lab would be really important. You said, you know, showing young people, you know, that college isn't for everybody. Nobody is excited to go get hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt. But there's another way. And this city has really, we've paid a lot of bills with blue-collar, hard-working people who helped build this country. And I think that valuing and highlighting the greatest assets of this city, which are the people that invested their lives here, to me, that's important as someone who grew up here. Because you can't throw a rock and not hit somebody that doesn't know somebody that worked to help build this nation. So I hope that we can, at some point, expand our conversation on tourism and our story. Not that it has to be all one thing, but I think there's many stories that makes this city great. Then the other question I had for you was on the the data that you had about how they would go from one location to another. It was the connections one. How did you come up with? Because it looked to me that if it has Truman on it, it seems to be the highest percentage of people connecting to, from one site to another.
That's your data. I can speak if you want. The data does, yeah, if somebody's interested in Truman, they are more likely to go to one or two. But so now we need to figure out, okay, how do we get them interested in things that are not Truman? You know, how do we connect the dots? That, you know, there is more than just Truman here. Back to the, it's not just one American story, it's many.
Getting the Truman people to go to the Vale Mansion or...
Come up to the microphone, because I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
As you ever mentioned, like getting the Truman people to go to, like, the Vale Mansion and other places around town. It's sort of like, the Truman people go to the Truman things, the other people go to the other things, trying to get some cross-pollination through marketing, hopefully.
Yeah. Okay. And then the one curiosity that I had when you were saying how many people came and that Kansas is the second state, where's Utah and all that? I mean, there's points of this, of our year where we're flooded with folks from Utah. It's the only state I can go to. And I don't have to say I'm from the Kansas City area. If I say I'm from Independence, they know exactly where that's at.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the, what showed up in the list is where the majority of people come from. So if people come from Utah, they're not coming to sufficient numbers to at least show up compared to the Missouri residents and Kansas residents.
Okay, okay. Well, I just, I was struck by that. That's a lot of folks. And I thought for sure we were going to hear Utah being one of those states. Well, I appreciate the work and the effort. I think it leaves this council, this city, with a lot of unique challenges of how we move our city forward in that area of tourism and not leave anything out. This is a great city. We've got lots of stories to tell. We just need an opportunity and an audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember, I just, if I can compliment you, and I don't know if this is out of line to do this, but I just loved how you said, "Build America, Move America, Feed America", and how we played a role in that. And I just think that, just so well said. And I know that was right off the top of your head, and I was impressed.
Well, actually, I came from the lady who had the loud phone.
Oh, okay.
Is she still here?
Well, I am glad she's here. I am glad she's here. Because if she said that, well, well done. And I, and to compliment you again, Councilmember, I love this fact that we have a great American, we have a great city, and we have many stories that make up this great city. And I just wanted to repeat what you said because I just thought that was so important. So thank you. And besides, I really, really, are those new glasses? Because I really like them.
You're the third person to notice them, so thank you.
You're quite welcome. I like them very much, so well done. Anyone else? Councilmember, anything else? Councilmember, okay, anyone else? I just loved the presentation. I wanted to also give the presenters tonight kudos. And I didn't compliment Ms. Haig before she left, so... she left, so I, if you can, Mr. City Manager, make sure that she hears that or I'll get her address and send her a card saying, "Thank you. I thought your presentation was excellent and it was just great information and it's just so important for our city." And Councilmember Steinmeier is great, is absolutely right. We've got many stories that make up this city. And I think he and Councilmember Hobart are probably in agreement of, we've got many cities or many stories that make up the city, is what I'm hearing. So, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate your presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, real quick.
Absolutely.
One thing that they mentioned, no questions, that I think we should give some recognition to is, you know, Mr. Director Heidi was granted the fine opportunity to become the tourism director on top of the parks director. And I just wanted to thank him for taking on that role. You know, the folks from PJAV mentioned that, that staff is stretched thin, but that the folks on the Tourism Commission are excited and energized and have lots of good ideas. I know they do and I'm very thankful for their service. And I wanted to thank Director Heidi for not only taking on additional duties, but doing the best he can while being stretched thin. So please convey that to your staff and thank you personally for also the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Okay, perfect. Thank you very much again. Great presentation. I took tons of notes and... Sorry, gentlemen, didn't want to interrupt, but I just, do you have anything else to add, Mr. City Manager? I thought they did a great presentation and thank you for making that ball roll. So thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
All right. Now this takes us to staff reports and, Councilmember, should I, do you have anything to say or should I turn it over to Councilmember Hobart?
I'd be happy to yield.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hobart, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few meetings ago, on September 18th, I made a bit of a statement that we may need to take a look at some of the ways we're doing business. This agenda item is a council member submitted resolution that pursuant to the new rules that we've approved will have to come to study session first. I asked our city manager to research and take a look at the specific rules and make this draft for some new rules that might create a better and more efficient and more harmonic, harmonic sort of operation for his staff. You know, I won't get too lektury about the whole thing, but as a reminder, in our charter, which still has been fought for decades, we have a city manager form of government. That means a small mayor and that means, really, that the council is intended to be very much like a board of directors. We are to set policy and we are to make laws. We may do some other functions from time to time. We certainly help citizens and have meetings with the city manager and have input on lots of different items, but for the most part, that's it. So... Here we are. And I know I'm tired of doing rules and probably everybody else is, too. This is certainly not what I want to be working on. I definitely would rather be working on trails museums and business items and North Points and hub developments and hopefully something at Kmart slash Venture one of these days. Hopefully something will come up there. You know, I ran into my buddies that are on the, at least, Summit City Council at the Hartland, Truman Heartland Foundation Dinner and they had like a six-hour council meeting, but it's because they were talking about business items. I wouldn't mind that. I do sort of mind this, but it's necessary. So here we are. I genuinely and truly hope this is the last time this is an issue for anybody on this dais. I hope this item, when it comes before us in a resolution to vote, that my fellow council members vote in favor of it. And I hope that it ceases the problems that we've had. If not, the charter does have a provision that's rather draconian that I would prefer not to get to, but I prefer not to get to this point either. But here we are. So, Mr. City Manager, would you please at least give a summary for the folks of what these rules contain and the, sort of, the purpose?
Yes, I'd be happy to. I think it would be appropriate to begin just by saying again, as Councilmember Hobart said, I was asked on his behalf to research these items and kind of compile best practices from other communities. So I just want to make clear, this is in no way the manager's office trying to lecture or govern the council. It's not our prerogative or our responsibility. So just wanted to make sure we were on the record with that. Some of the key provisions in here, there are terms regarding engagement with city staff. Under these proposed rules, the mayor and any member of the council would be required to report any interaction with a subordinate employee of the city manager to the clerk and that information would be compiled into a monthly report to be provided through the information-only section at the regular council meeting on your agenda. There's language in here about council conduct with the public. You know, just making sure the council has some general guidelines about how they comport themselves publicly, how they comport themselves with city staff, how they comport themselves in engagement with their constituents, really stressing the behaviors and guidelines of honesty and respect for all. There are some provisions about conduct with other public agencies, specifically guiding the council to make sure that when they are representing themselves with other public agencies, that they're clear about whether they are speaking on behalf of the city or their own personal interests. And then further clarifying if those statements are the opinion of the majority or minority of the council. So, other relevant portions, council conduct with the media, encouraging the council to work through the city communications officer prior to speaking for the media, not to, you know, try to restrict that, but rather to make sure commentary is consistent with the city's position on different issues. There is language about city's council conduct with developers, real estate brokers and agents of developers, specifically restricting council members from discussing prospective application for a development project or a rezoning or an economic development incentive with an applicant without having a member of the city manager's office team present there. And then finally, some language in here about ensuring the public trust, refusing personal gifts, where it is believed that anything with more than a nominal value would be given to a member of the governing body, imploring that the council continue to make fiscally sound policies, avoiding unilateral action, prohibitions on using city equipment for anything other than city business specifically, and abstaining from participation in any decision of the council where a possible conflict of interest may exist. So those are some of the highlights. Happy to answer any other questions as I may be able to that the council may have. I'll yield back to you, Councilmember Hobart.
I'm good. I understand the rules. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hobart, and thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. Hobart, if I could just yield for a second, would you mind chairing this meeting just for a second so I can step out and then I'll be right back in...
Oh, no, of course.
Three or five minutes? Thank you. And is it okay? I mean, you can come up here or you can stay there, whatever, whatever your preference.
Here's fine.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor, that's fine.
And I'll step out just for a second. Excuse me.
Sure. Is there any other council members that have some discussion?
Mr. Mayor, please.
Yes, Mr. Councilmember Stewart?
I don't really have an issue with too much of anything on here. I think it's all fine. I just had some very specific questions about a couple of them, so I'm not really sure. I guess I'll address it to the city manager. So it says, "Any interaction with any one of your subordinates..." I mean, I think you know that I very seldom have any interaction with your staff without you knowing about it, but on occasion, I'll see somebody at an event or something, you know, and we'll have a brief conversation. Sometimes it's city-related, you know, sometimes it's not, but most of the time, it's not very meaningful. So I guess those conversations, those have to be reported, even if it's not about city business, because it does say "any interaction".
That's, that's the way it's written right now, but of course, the study session is for the purpose of refining this prior to bringing it for the council's final vote.
Right. I would prefer, you know, it be some type of meaningful conversation about city business. That'll be my only comment about that. And then as far as the council conduct with media, you know, I'll just, a recent example, I was caught by the Independence Examiner after an event the other day at Hawthorne Apartments and they asked me for my opinion on, you know, the event and what was going on there and I gave it to them. I guess in that situation, I should have just said, you know, "I'll stand by and I can't give a comment. I don't know." Is that kind of the way I'm seeing it?
I'm gonna, I mean, I put this together. It's really not the place for the city manager to lecture the council on how to behave.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
I think on both of those points, Councilmember Stewart, I think they're both good points and I think they'd both be open for discussion amongst the council and certainly for amendment, whatever the sort of consensus is. Definitely a starting point, but certainly open for consensus. You know, being a lawyer, obviously, I'm a big free speech guy and I, you know, I do believe if, you know, Mr. Janey, who has been incredibly fair and so has Mr. Fox through the years and many other members of the press, to members of this body, we should have the ability to comment from time to time without having all our comments screened. So, anyway, I would certainly, not trying to be draconian about all these or say they're exactly how they are and that's how it'll be. I think it's open for discussion for sure.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fears?
So I had basically the same thoughts as Councilmember Stewart. I mean, my thought was, is, you know, for example, under, under the way this is currently written, if I went to the grocery store and saw our police chief and asked him about his kid's ballgame, I'd need to report that. You know, if I asked the city manager for permission to contact someone and he said yes, I'd still have to report that. So that was a little, so I have that same concern. I think, you know, something about materiality or something, same thing holds true with the media question, you know. You know, I think we need to be free to provide our opinion to Mr. Janey on something if we want to and yet, you know, I mean, I think I understand the guidance of seeking assistance from the communications folks. I mean, that's always wise. So I think that makes sense as well. I did have a question specifically on one part of the actual ordinance and it's item D, DB, item D, paragraph B. Says, "City council members will work with the city manager through the council structure, not on an individual council manager basis." I'm trying to understand what that means from a standpoint of, I mean, we are encouraged to meet with the city manager on a regular basis and so either one-on-one or in smaller groups to address questions we have on the agenda or whatever else. So I'm interested in what, if you can provide a little clarification on that.
Yeah. And again, a lot of these provisions were borrowed from other communities' council code of conducts, but really, this just speaks to the form of government, that this is a body and not seven individuals. So while we do meet individually, which is highly beneficial for both parties, I believe, ultimately, this is reflecting that decisions are made as a body and, you know, not individually or, you know, trying to politicize the office of the city manager by saying, you know, "Be with me on this issue, or, you know, don't be with them on this issue." Again, we bring recommendations forward and then the council deliberates and makes a decision as a body.
Okay. I think I understand what you mean by that, so, okay. Well, so those are really my comments and observations. I think it needs some work relative to those two areas that we, we previously discussed. You know, in general, I have, I mean, conceptually, I don't have any issue with any of it at all. A lot of it, to me, is redundant to the city charter. And so, you know, I'm not sure the benefit of at least putting some of it in code, but I don't have any problem with doing that. It just seems like some of, a lot of it's redundant, so I think that's, those are my comments.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Tiny interject real quick on a couple of things.
Absolutely.
Just since it's gotten brought up, I think, twice now, on the chain of command issue, currently, it does say that "Any interaction occurring between a member of the city council and a subordinate employee of the city manager, other than matters of inquiry, shall be reported to the city clerk, who shall then publish a monthly report." So obviously, that language can be further tweaked, but I mean, the idea is that sort of general, "Hey, what's going on with that building downtown and, you know, how are your kids? Everything okay at PD?", that kind of stuff is not, you know, that's not what this is meant to cover. So again, certainly, it's up to you all if you want to kind of expand that definition, but I, the intent is not to, you know, sort of lock down communication, I don't believe. Also, I want to point out, these are, you know, this would not be codified. These are proposed, as it's been presented by Councilmember Hobart, this is proposed to be an addition to your rules of procedure, so it's not technically part of the city code. And, you know, as such, it would be, you know, a resolution that you all would consider if you wanted to make those changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I may add just one more thing, if that's okay. It is monumentally important that we not add additional labor and tasks to an already strained workforce. So I have neither the time or the interest in documenting, you know, every conversation that's occurring between members of the governing body and city staff. There's, there's a lot of times where it's important that you go and have a ride along with city staff or drop into a fire station or stop by a roll call for the police, whatever those things may be, to familiarize yourself and help you do the best job that you can as policymakers. I think what we are trying to expound upon from the city charter is the, "Okay, Mr. Staffperson, here's how it's going to be. We're going to do X, Y, and Z and we're going to get it done by this date." That's, that's the kind of stuff that we're trying to further discourage because it runs afoul.
Doesn't the charter, though, specifically speak to that already?
Well, there's a lot of things in the charter that are spoken to that aren't followed, so...
I mean, I don't have a problem putting it in, you know, in another document, but I just, you know, I mean, that's what we're supposed to do. That's what we ought to be doing, so...
Agreed. Agreed.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Um, in, in the three-plus years I've been here, I, I, I think I've, I find this job to be, um, uh, in- intriguing, educational, uh, enlightening. Um, I, I've come to realize, and, and I, I've really learned it probably in the second year, that our job is really not to get in the weeds. I mean, that is, Mr. Walker has been nothing but a consultant for me, so if I bring something to him and say, "Had like to talk about this," or maybe, "Let's have a resolution on this," or "Let's talk about an ordinance on this," he really serves as an advisory consultant. I have not, in three years, went and, and found, uh, someone in city staff and sit down and said, "I want you to do it this way." I just haven't, uh, because that's not my role. Mr. Walker's role is to get into those weeds. Our job's to smell the flowers. I mean, we, we've got the easy role here. We're supposed to bring solutions to things we see or constituents bring to us. And I know that it's happened, that in the past and even in the present, where we've had council members that, that just get into too much of the weeds, and it complicates things, and it, and it complicates Mr. Cover's position. And I'm not picking on anybody. I, listen, I love the fact that we're, we're trying to define this. I think it's, it's a good conversation to have. It really is. You know, when we talk about code of conduct, it has to really be in line with the code of ethics, which we're trying to figure all that out, too. And then, and then I was looking, and, and, Mr. Walker, do you, are you familiar with the ICMA Code of Ethics?
I am.
You want to tell everybody what that is?
Uh, well, ICMA is the professional organization governing city and county managers, and, uh, when this form of government was adopted, there were, uh, tenets, um, adopted as a code of ethics. You know, different professions have these, but they govern the way that, uh, city managers and county managers are to comport themselves, uh, in their, uh, professional roles.
Twelve points, all on one page. I've read it. I've done some research on it. You know, I can't find anybody that says this is a bad code of ethics. It's actually very good. And I, and I worry that our, maybe ours, and I'm not being critical, Mayor, so please don't think I am, that maybe it's our, our pa- our thirty plages or however many we're up to, maybe it might be too academic. Uh, it might be too collegial. Um, I don't see chattel on here anywhere. And there's probably one, two, three, four, maybe a handful of people in here that even know what chattel is, right? And so, the, the whole purpose, the whole purpose of, of, you know, our code of conduct is for transparency and accountability to you. I mean, it, it's so, it's a guideline of standards that you can say, "I understand how they're supposed to behave and act, and, and, and I'm not gonna ask them to act, to do anything outside of that." And then we're supposed to understand it easily, to say, "We're not gonna do anything outside of that." There's many times where, though, we get out of our lanes, and we make his life miserable, and probably a lot of city staff, and that's hard. The job's hard enough. And so, I, I don't, I, when I read this, I understand what's being said. If you, if we need to spell it out more, we can, but I think we understand, we're supposed to smell the roses, the flowers, and let Mr. Walker sort through the weeds. We bring ideas, if they're doable, if they're, if there's something that makes sense, if it's good for the city, if it's good for the people who live here, we vote on it, we move it forward, then they're tasked with putting it and implementing it into action. So I don't think it needs to be a big thing. I love the discussion. I really do, and I just want to make sure that whatever, you know, common good that we do, that we're working towards, that we have actions that, that really represent that. And I'll just leave us with one thought before I'm quiet. And I have lots of different models here that we could talk about, but my favorite president was Ronald Reagan. He was my commander in chief when I was in the Navy, so I liked him. He said, "If no one among us is capable of governing himself, then who among us has the capacity to govern someone else?" So I think we know what our role is. I really do. We don't have to complicate it. I just think we just need to just figure out that there's an easy way of doing what we do for the common good of the people that we serve. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinmeier, and, uh, to quote you again, uh, I liked your making this simple, uh, smell the roses, make it very simple, so, well done. Uh, you're, in my opinion, you're on a roll tonight.
It goes back to her.
Well, I love the fact that you're giving credit, uh, so.
She's not wearing cleats.
Very good. Councilmember, please.
Um, I'm gonna back up what Councilmember Steinmeier said. It, it seems like we're trying to legislate common sense here, and that's, it's always a difficult place to be. Um, I want to just ask for some clarification for, um, a portion in here. Uh, Mr. Cover, if you could give me an opinion. If any council member violates any provision of this section, said council member shall be gu- guilty of a misdemeanor, and upon conviction thereof, shall be punished by a fine of not less than twenty-five dollars, not more than five hundred dollars. Any such conviction of any council member shall be caused for removal from office, and such council member shall be automatically removed by said conviction, effective at the expiration of the period during which he or she may appeal in case of appeal when the face, case is finally determined. So, um, can you, just for clarification, I know that's in the charter, where is that adjudicated? Who monitors it? Who brings forward the complaint? Who determines the fines?
Well, those are excellent questions. Uh, to be fair, it's a little unclear, because some of, again, some of what's in the charter, while a lot of it is, is, is good and fundamental and has served the city for a long time, some of it doesn't quite work, at least not in the way and with the, the structures and processes that we have in place now. So luckily, it hasn't been an issue where such a case has, or, or, uh, you know, process has needed to be adjudicated. Um, but it is a little unclear exactly how that would work if such an occasion, uh, did arise, again, because some of, some of what's set up is either, A, contradictory even within the charter, or, or B, just doesn't quite work with how, uh, the current, you know, some of the structures and, and, and agencies and offices that we have in place now. Uh, this is something that, you know, we've tried to address with the, with the code of ethics. Uh, we, we've tried to sort of smooth that out as best we can. There's also recommendations that are coming from, will eventually come from the Charter Review Commission to try to address some of those issues as well. Uh, but, but the short answer is, if, if that occurred, we'd, we'd have to sort of figure out the best we could at the time in order to, uh, move forward.
Thank you. Um, I was just doing like a mental tally, uh, as Councilmember Fears mentioned, the number of interactions I've had this week with city staff. I saw police at coffee with a cop. Um, you know, I've had ride-alongs in the past. Uh, I was at a public meeting this afternoon with the chamber, with, um, City Manager and the Assistant City Manager, uh, and John Mayfield. I've been out in social events. If we have to register every one of those interactions, that becomes problematic. The spirit of all of this is stay in your lane and don't give orders or ask for work product from people who are not your employees. And we have one employee, and that is Mr. Walker. Um, so I think, uh, in many ways, the policing needs to be done among ourselves for our colleagues, to be sure that we all, when we come into this job, understand our responsibilities and remind each other of such. I think the intent of this is very reasonable, but I am thoughtful about the implementation of the specifics. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else have a further discussion? Mr. Hobart, or, excuse me, Councilmember Hobart? Okay. City Manager Walker, any closing comments?
Uh, per the new council rules, this would, um, be added to the, uh, regular meeting that I believe is November 2nd. I believe, 6th, yeah.
Okay.
Why don't you just talk?
Okay. It, it'll be added to the November 6th, uh, meeting agenda, but as, per the rules, it requires to be on the meeting agenda, uh, as an information-only item first before it can be voted on. So on November 6th, it'll be on there as an information-only item, and then November 20th would be, uh, on the agenda for your consideration of voting.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was excellent. Thank you very much. Well done. Okay. Another further discussion on that item. Uh, City Councilmember Stewart, I will recognize you, and, and, Councilmember, I may, I, you can proceed, but I think also, mm, uh, City Manager Walker has some great information to offer, but I'll let you direct the discussion and just give you license.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
So, um, this was just an idea I came up with. Um, obvi- the Adventure Oasis, along with a lot of things, are, um, funded by, um, a tax. And I know that the zoo, Kansas City Zoo, they give out passes every year to Jackson County residents just to kind of say, "Thank you, you know, for your support of this tax," and, um, I just thought this would be a good idea for our residents to maybe give out a couple of passes for, to Adventure Oasis. I had some conversations with the City Manager about this, and, um, seen if we could come up with something, and, well, the resolution is before you. Um, and that's about it, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, I know, City Manager Walker, you had, uh, um, I don't want to put you on the spot here. I know you had a, a lot of information that we could use or, um, how we proceed, uh, because I think you were also concerned about some cost factors, but I may be, in fact, going out of my lane here.
Yeah, I, I, I think we just wanted to get some clarity, and, um, you know, this doesn't necessarily have to be a part of the policy decision, but, uh, implementation of this. Um, you know, I think we'll want to sort out, are we, are we sending it to, uh, every household in the city? Are we staggering that, like the Kansas City doza- zoo does across, um, zip codes or census tract, something of that nature? Um, are we, you know, making a certain number available throughout the summer? Um, you know, how, how do we want to, to implement that? So that was, um, without going too far in the weeds, that was just some of the information we wanted to, um, further tease out as we contemplate, um, the program.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember?
I would like to see the program. Um, I just had the idea, and however city staff decides to implement it, I think it would be up to them. So if we need to make some changes, that's fine, um, but however they think it's necessary.
So what I'm hearing you say, Councilmember, for clarity sake, uh, survey's on the same table, same page, you're really saying, "Hey, I'd love to have a program like this."
Yeah.
"Staff come back and make a recommendation, and we'll proceed," if I'm hearing you correctly?
Yes. What they think, what they think that we can do.
Okay.
Within reason.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, proceed.
Uh, Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd like to see a, uh, and I know it's in the budget somewhere, but I don't know that it's, it's in the easily presentable form. I'd like to see sort of a P and L for, um, Adventure Oasis, uh, maybe for the last twelve months. Uh, I don't know that, please don't include COVID. Maybe we can do pre-COVID, please. Um, because I would assume at some point we'll get back there. Uh, maybe for the last twelve months, and then, or for the last, this season, and then maybe for a couple of years before, um, twenty, or twenty-one. Um, so that, uh, COVID doesn't skew the numbers.
So, if we, he- here, here are your attendance figures for the last couple of seasons. Two thousand and eighteen, sixty-six thousand. Two thousand and nineteen, sixty-two thousand. We were closed during 2020.
Yeah.
Um, 2021, thirty-nine thousand. So you can see the precipitous drop there. Then, 2022 is when we started the program with residents only. It drops to thirty-six thousand in 2022, and this past season, uh, thirty-six thousand. Um, number of season ticket holders has followed a similar decline from fifty-two hundred in 2018 to three thousand this past year. Um, both pre and post-COVID, um, this is a, a highly subsidized operation, subsidized by the park sales tax. Um, the program, uh, in, in eighteen, which is the high-water mark, uh, from the data that we prepared, five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars was total revenue that year. Um, total expenditures was five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, so we had a forty-four thousand dollar loss. Jump ahead to fiscal year twenty-three, revenues were three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Expenditures were just a shade over one million dollars, so the water park was subsidized, uh, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I think one of the factors you have to keep in mind is other municipalities around us have opened their own attractions as well in this period of time.
Well, I was gonna ask you about that, so.
Yeah.
Is, Blue Springs is open, right?
Correct.
Can we get, can we get some, you think they'll give us, well, they're pu- they should be public numbers, because it's publicly owned, right?
Yeah, publicly owned, and then, um, you know, Lee Summit has brought on some, um, improved.
Oh, they, they bought their, uh, they bought that old, um, park, and they, they got that open then as a water?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, I believe different parts of Kansas City, like I know South Kansas City down in the Red Bridge area, uh, has opened, um, a municipal water park as well there. So we're not the only game in town anymore, like we once were, and so, um...
I'd be mostly concerned about Blue Springs on, in Lee Summit on that, actually, because I'm guessing, wha- and what's the residents-only program that we, you said we started?
So, starting in twenty-two, um, because of an influx, well, several issues. One was staffing challenges, um, but also then an influx of calls for public safety services. Um, there were some incidents that necessitated, um, police response to the water park. Uh, we've implemented a residents-only program. Now, there are restrictions, I mean, exceptions to that, I should say.
Right.
Um, but, and our thought process was this was built with and continues to be funded by, uh, sales tax dollars from our community. It should be prioritized first and foremost for our community. Um, so that's, the last two years, we've operated with that, um, which has dropped the number of calls for service. Um, but, you know, can't deny that we've also seen a decline in the overall participation. Causation, you know, is, could be attributed to that, could be attributed to having other water parks in the region as well.
I'm not out to get your idea, Councilmember Stewart. I'm, uh, promise you that. I, uh, was just curious. I still would like to see, especially because of the difference in cost, considering the attendance dropped by half.
Yeah.
And the cost went up by, what, forty percent?
Yeah.
Or fif- fifty percent?
And, uh, uh...
In the, in those intervening years?
Yeah, and, and look, I think, you know, there, there is some, from a staff standpoint, that, there is some merit to figuring something. I mean, this is an asset that's paid for with park sales tax. I think we could work on ways to mitigate, um, both, um, an influx of people showing up all at once. I've heard that as a concern, um, but also the financial side as well. So, you know, this was, again, this is what we want to do in these study sessions, is get some feedback and thoughts and concerns, and we can, uh, certainly go back and work with our park staff to figure out a responsible and manageable program.
Now, those, the thirty-six thousand people from this season, are, is that total number of visits? Total number of people? And visits, or is that total number of, yeah, total, is that total numbers through the door?
That is, um, total attendance. That is total attendance. So those, some of those may be repeat visitors.
Okay. And they should be, since we do have some season ticket holders and undoubtedly some...
Right.
People that go regularly.
Right.
Okay. But we don't keep data on that. We don't have data on that either.
We...
Exactly.
We just track the total number of pass holders and then total daily attendance, but we aren't counting unique visitors.
Okay. So you mentioned calls for service?
Yes, sir.
Are we talking IPD, AMR?
IPD.
IFD?
IPD. Yeah. Just crowd control issues. You know, you get too many people in a confined space on a hot summer day. There's some issues that necessitated police response.
Right. Okay. Well, I don't mean to send your staff down a rabbit hole on a thing that obviously is losing money. And I'm not asking you to do some miracle turnaround like, you know, John Legere with T-Mobile or something. I just, I'd still, do we know the explanation for the rising costs? Is it labor? It can't just be labor. Are there other operating costs that went up? Insurance, or repairs, or...
You, you know...
Chemicals, materials?
A large portion of it is attributed to materials. You know, the costs of the chemicals to treat the pool, to maintain the pool, just like we talked about with other costs that we brought to, before the council, materials is one of the biggest expenses. Maintenance costs rank up there. And in terms of, you got a lot of pipes, you got a lot of moving pieces, a lot of equipment, so those require ongoing maintenance and the cost, not just for the materials, but the labor with that. And then the council may recall, this past season, we increased the hourly wage for the lifeguards in an effort to try to fill those positions.
Okay. So, I'm genuinely sorry now, Councilmember Stewart, but you've stumbled upon a thing that's piqued my curiosity. And a million dollars is too much money to be spending out of our $2 million park sales tax that we routinely collect, especially when we have two historic buildings that are falling down. We have a Trails Museum that's temporarily relocated. We have a new exhibit with a charitable organization that we're trying to get open, that they're trying to get open. A million dollars goes a long way towards a lot of other things, and we really need, actually, to take a deeper look at this. So...
Don't disagree.
Again, I'd, I would like to see a P and L on it that has some more detail on some of those costs. I'm not gonna say it has to be super detailed, but we need some basics on it, if at all possible, please. If you wanted to go through audit and finance first, that's fine, if that's easier to do with Ms. Gray.
Our Parks Director put together some great information that I can, income and expenditure analysis and these attendance statistics. I can send it to the full council, and then if you would like to add it for the audit and financial revenue in a few weeks, we're happy to follow the lead of the council, sir.
Okay. I mean, I may, actually, I may do that. Actually, I probably exactly will do that. So you might give Ms. Gray a head up, but all, heads up, but I will probably do that. And if you would send that on, that'd be great.
I will make sure to get this out to the council this evening.
Yeah, we need to, we need to take a look at that right away. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please proceed.
In that evaluation, Mr. Walker, can you also, this is an old facility. This was built 20-plus years ago, and we're gonna be facing replacement costs. So it's not just the cost of operation, it is gonna be the cost to continue. So at least some basic understanding of what that looks like over time would be helpful.
Be happy to, Councilmember. I will tell you, while we'll send the, you know, more granular detail to the body, since we're kind of on this topic tonight, known today are about $12 million in maintenance and replacement costs at that facility.
12 million?
12 million, 1-2.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Yeah, so, if I can, Mr., Councilmember Stewart, are you talking two passes per household? Is that, is that right?
That was my thought, yes.
Okay. And help, help me, and you and I should have talked about this the other day. I'm sorry, I didn't ask you this. And, and with this, are you hoping to bolster more paid attendance by it? Or are we, are we putting any parameters that if they're gonna use it, that they can use it with another paid admission, two paid admissions, three paid admission? I, I mean, how are we gonna utilize it to bolster the, and I'm not meaning to put you on the spot, so please forgive me if you feel that way.
I mean, I hadn't really thought about that, but I mean, I guess something like that could work.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, I, I think everyone sees the writing on the wall. We're competing against newer parks. I think that, you know, the, the fact that staffing is a huge issue, and this isn't our first year for that issue either.
It is not.
So, and then with the chemical costs going up and insurance costs going up, it, you know, if we don't have more city participation, I think that, you know, the, the reality of it is we may lose this park. And, and that's, that's sad, but at the same time, you can't operate at huge losses like this for very long. Can we also ask that maybe the Parks Commission have some discussion about that? Is that something that maybe they can talk about?
If, if the council would like us to, the only thing I would ask is maybe add just a little more context to what you want the group to discuss, so we can hem that.
Just, just to look at, just how, you know, any, any framework of, of, you know, how we compare to other parks. Let, I know, I know one of my constituent who is on Parks talks to me a lot about it, and, and she takes her kids to, her grandkids to Lee Summit, and they buy tickets online, and oftentimes they sell out. They only have so many they can do. And they have, they have just better amenities, they have more to offer. And at some point, we have to decide, can we be competitive in this, this market? So, I, I think that they, they may have some boots-on-the-ground type of experience that maybe we don't, that could, they could add to it as well. And maybe they come back with a conclusion that this thing's on life support, and if things don't change, maybe they recommend us that we look at pulling the plug at some point, so.
So I would be happy to kind of package some of the same information we'll send to the council, but provide it to the Parks Commission, maybe have them provide some feedback to you as the governing body, if that works for the, for the council.
Just worry about our fiscal responsibility on that, since it's so seasonal, it's such a short season, with the needs of our city and things that we've got to look at. It might, we may find that it's maybe more profitable to sell it off and let someone else try it, and we put money towards greater needs. So, so for everyone to think about. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember, I just, one quick question. Did you mean a pun when you said pull the plug? Sorry. You found it funny? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, uh...
Just, just, I'll look forward to seeing things at audit and finance on that. And, and I had similar thoughts to what Councilmember Steinmeier mentioned, that, you know, maybe, maybe we do something like, you know, we, we, it's a free with a paid, you know, a free child with a paid dog, or something to that effect, which might help your IPD responses as well.
Sure.
Theoretically, at least.
Yeah. No, we'd be happy to...
Something, something.
This, this...
Because the ideas of these kind of programs, obviously, is to, to increase attendance and increase, you know, revenue, and so, you know, that would be the, one way to do that, at least.
Yeah. Our, our thought when Councilmember Stewart and I spoke about this was, the average household being, you know, three to four people. If you have two, the family comes out, so you're, you're getting two paid admissions you may not get, you're getting concessions off of four individuals, rentals, et cetera. So we'll continue to refine this and, and bring something forward for the council, but also the more global conversation on the water park as well.
Anyone else other comments? Please proceed.
So my comments are not on the water park?
Okay. Yeah. And, and anybody else, other other comments or things like that? So, Councilmember, please proceed.
I'd, I'd like to ask my colleagues if we could consider doing a study session on the 23rd, because we have a number of items that I think require attention. I would love to hear more about the Body Cameras Grant and what we think will come of that, how we propose to make the rules around the footage, who can access it, who governs it, how is it stored, et cetera. I think there's some important policy questions in there. The second is, I know, Mr. City Manager, that you've completed the Royals Economic Impact Study. I'd like to hear that and what we are anticipating that will do to our sales tax, to our tourism dollars. And then the third is that you put out an RFP for the governance ownership discussion around IPL. You've had a couple of organizations selected. I'd love to hear kind of what you anticipate, what the rules will be, et cetera. I think those are all substantive enough for us to warrant a second study session. And I will propose that I think we are going to need to start having regular two study sessions per month. There are just important issues coming up, and we need to have a forum for those kind of substantive discussions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Mr. City Manager, anything else to wrap us up, unless there's anything else?
So just, do we have directive for study sessions?
Any objections?
No objection for me.
I'm gonna take the, I'm gonna kind of rule this way, that we'll have it on the 23rd if there's no objections or any concerns expressed. I think those are all important issues. I am so glad that you brought those to our attention, and I think they need to be addressed. And my only concern is, Mr. City Manager, do you think you'll have sufficient time on those dates to, to talk about those without any, and, you know, like, just stressing to try to get it done?
Yes, just very quickly, the Economic Impact Study has been finalized, and I shared that in my weekly report with the council last week. We're, we're at a point of being, and this is not critical, but we're stalled on the IPL project till we bring this forward and make sure we're clear with the council where we're headed. And then, I know the chief is already working with his leadership and command team to prepare the body camera process. So unlike Councilmember Hobart, I don't want five-hour meetings, so I think having the second study session would be helpful.
Very good. Thank you. But I just want to make sure you felt comfortable with it.
Oh, yeah. I appreciate you inquiring, and, yeah, we are, we are ready to go.
Thank you. Anyone else other comments?
Just, just a clarification on that. Do we need to make a rule change if we're gonna go back to two? Because it's, there's a rule that says one study session a month right now. I think it's 3.4, or it's the new one, one of the, but there is a rule that says one study session now. Because we changed it at one...
I believe it says at least one. I, I don't think it's limited. I'll double-check.
Will you?
Yeah, but, but I, my recollection is that it shall hold at least one study session, and it's, so I, I think we're okay, but I'll check.
Okay.
I'll check.
I trust you.
Good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Good point. Thank you. Anyone else? With that, we'll call it adjourned.